Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, Saint Lucie County. Today is Tuesday, July 27th, the time now 2:04. You'll please join us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious Father, we begin this commission meeting with gratitude and thanks for all the blessings that have been given. We remember those who are less fortunate and we work to be a blessing in their lives. We remember our men and women in uniform around the world and their families who sacrificed so much. And Father, we remember our medical providers and first responders who closer to home put our needs before theirs. For all of those we remember this day, we ask for your safety and blessings upon them. And for this meeting, we ask that our words and our actions reflect the best that is in each of us as we address the important matters of today. For all of this, we are grateful, we say thank you, and we say amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Okay. So, the first item of business will be public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board on any item may come forward. If it is for a public hearing, please hold your comments until that time where they're more pertinent.
There's no public hearings.
So, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Chairman, fellow commissioners. My name is Robert Barry Muklow. I live at 1891 Southeast Aries Lane in Port St. Lucie. And as a Saint Lucie County resident since early 1972, and with a 10-year history of paying attention and being involved in efforts to improve Saint Lucie County, I'm here to express the following facts and concerns as I see them. On today's consent agenda, item 8F2, which is page 321 of your packet that I'm referring to, under section 3, subtitle "Rent," there is a notation under "Needs" of an office space for 60 people. And I stress it's under the list of needs, not wants. And so my question is, among others, why is space needed for 60 people if the only purpose allowed under the lease, as stated, is contact tracing? I fail to understand that. Another question, if Saint Lucie County needs 60 contact tracers, specifically, why is it this issue at the very forefront of public consciousness in Saint Lucie County? I want to tell you, the public perception is that items on a consent agenda are not on the same scale of importance as items such as public hearings and regular agenda. That's perception. Truth may differ from that. I understand that. Also, there is some sense that items are placed on a consent agenda to keep them under the radar. Citizens in general believe that sunlight is the best disinfectant, as do I. Therefore, in light of the above, as a citizen with demonstrated interest and commitment to transparent, accountable government in Saint Lucie County, I'm asking for consent agenda item 8F2 to be pulled for discussion at today's meeting. Thank you very much. I appreciate your listening.
Thank you, sir. We are under public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board?
Good afternoon. Chairman Zdowski and Commission, my name is Mark Gotts. I'm at 154 Northwest Magnolia Lakes Boulevard. I also rise to talk regarding item 8F2. This is a lease for contract or contact tracers. Now, what exactly is a contact tracer? I've seen numerous clips on what contract, contact tracing does. Obviously, they use that a lot initially with COVID-19 to try to track people who are in the same area that somebody who attracted COVID-19 had. And it didn't go over very well initially. And to see that we are now going to be leasing space to someone who's going to have 60 people into contact tracing, I know I've heard that this is supposedly for AIDS and some other disease that they're putting this together. But contact tracing has a very poor history. I mean, the Communist Chinese Party uses contact tracing in order to identify people who congregate with people that they, the Communist Chinese Party does not like. This is a way of tracing people. Who is going to monitor and enforce what exactly their mission is? It doesn't say in the lease. Are they there just for those two items? But 60 people? We've been told by staff, the majority of our AIDS people are in prison. We have a large amount of people with AIDS in prison. And basically, they work their way over there so that they can get medical help and free medicine. So, what exactly is it that you're leasing to? What are they going to use for fixtures? Are these people going to be on cameras, in little modulators, checking out the different areas of bathrooms and different things like this? Or how exactly are they going to do this contact tracing? I think the board would be wise to try to investigate and drill down on this a little bit because I think this somewhat affects the individual freedom that we have. And when individual freedoms are, um, are put at risk, let's put it that way, we end up into a collective society. I mean, contract tracing, contact tracing is used by despots and by dictators to weed out those who are against them. I find this very disturbing that we would be leasing them space in one of our public buildings for this. I know it's the Health Department, and the Health Department has its own rules and regulations, as we've seen with the CDC and all of the ad for an item directives that they've given us that for the most part have been incorrect. So I would ask that F2, 8F2 be polled and discussed to get more information out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. We are under public comment. Anyone wishing to address the board?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Larry Lee Jr., and I'm here today to give you an update. When I was in the legislature, I sponsored a bill to help build the Highwayman Museum over in the Lincoln Park community. And we're happy to know that the previous legislative session, $30 million was approved statewide for museums and history on African-Americans throughout the state. So we'll be applying for some of that. And we have identified a piece of property on Avenue D, and you all are the proud owners of that property. And so my request today is that at some later point, we would like to come back and make a presentation to you once we get our plans. This property, if you want to ride out and take a look at it, it's across from the transit station, and it's about a block from 8th Street to 9th Street, which would be an ideal place to put this Highwayman facility. But just wanted to let you know that we're looking at that. As I understand it, I think it was purchased originally with a grant, and that it was, the purpose was to have parking for the people that ride the bus, but it's never been used. So it's really just sitting there, and we want to turn that block of property into something very nice for that community. Thank you for listening and...
Thank you, Representative Lee. We think we all look forward to having additional conversations with you.
Thank you.
We are under public comment and anyone wishing to address the board this time. Seeing no further movement, we'll come back to the board. Next item is the approval of the minutes. There are no scheduled items at this time. There are no proclamations. However, I did have a question. Who wanted to do, Howard, did you want to bring up that subject?
The one that's not on the agenda? That would be the resolution honoring Assistant County Attorney Heather Young for her faithful and dedicated service to Saint Lucie County Board of County Commissioners for 35 years?
35 years? I'm going to let you handle that. Madam Clerk, do you have the resolution?
Yes.
Please proceed.
A resolution honoring Assistant County Attorney Heather Young for her faithful and dedicated service to Saint Lucie County Board of County Commissioners in Saint Lucie County, Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Saint Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Heather Young will retire on July 30th, 2021 from her position as Assistant County Attorney in the Saint Lucie County Attorney's Office after 35 years of dedicated service to the Board. Heather grew up in Huntington, Indiana, and attended the Huntington North High School. She then studied at Washington and Lee University of Law and Vanderbilt University. She was hired as Assistant County Attorney by Dan McIntyre in August of 1986, and in fact, she was the first person hired by Mr. McIntyre. For 35 years, Heather Young has worked tirelessly to assist the county with legal matters. Her professional tenure spans a unique era of growth in this county. She has contributed her wisdom, intelligence, depth in experience, and sense of public responsibility to many areas, not the least, of which is representing the canvassing board in many high-profile elections over the years. Heather has also been crucial, been a crucial factor in negotiating collective bargaining agreements with the Teamsters. Heather has a passion for animals and thoroughly enjoys her work with animal control, helping to rescue animals and put them into loving homes. She also has four lucky animals of her own, two greyhounds, dog named Kip and Molly, and two horses named Callie and Dewey. Ms. Young has served as legal counsel for many advisory boards, including but not limited to Planning and Zoning Commission, Treasury Coast Education, Research and Development Authority, Canvassing Board, and others. Now, therefore, it be resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Saint Lucie County, Florida, does hereby express its sincere appreciation and gratitude for Heather Young's 35 years of faithful and dedicated service to the Board of County Commissioners of Saint Lucie County, Florida, and exemplifying outstanding dedication to Saint Lucie County, Florida. It be further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be presented to Heather Young as a token of the Board's appreciation. Passed and duly adopted this 27th day of July, 2021.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second, all in favor. Aye. Congratulations. We're going to miss you, and I'll share that Dan McIntyre, who is never an emotional guy, didn't show up today because he was going to cry. So he didn't want to cry in public, so he regretfully stands his regards.
Well, thank you. And I just, I guess I just want to say thank you all very much for this and for recognizing. But I do want to also say thank you for the support that all the Boards of County Commissioners have provided to me and the County Attorney's Office over the last 35 years. And I, as I share with Commissioner Zdowski, I specifically checked the agenda and civic clerk to make sure you all were not doing this. So congratulations. You all did manage to accomplish that, and I appreciate it very much. And I, I know that it was probably drafted by Carol and the rest of the staff. So thank you all, everyone back there for supporting me and for all the departments that I've worked with over the years. And I'd mention particularly the animal safety folks have a special spot in my heart. And I know that you all are in the best of hands going forward. And I also knew Dan is away on county business, and he probably would not have cried anyway. So thank you again very much. I appreciate it.
Let's get a picture of Spurber.
Okay.
That's too many of them. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you'll be missed, Heather. You'll be missed. Let's see. Next item, no presentations, proclamations have been completed. Next item is a consent agenda. Anyone wishing to pull an item for separate vote or conversation, discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I could go ahead and pull 8K2, this is the Midway Road sidewalks, and just real quickly, this is a payment in lieu of. If I could just make sure on the record that those monies are dedicated back to the Midway Road sidewalk and enhancements that we spoke about in the, during the budget retreat and at the request of some of the public on 8F2. And maybe we can have somebody go over and give the details on that for the public's sake.
Okay.
I'm sure I was going to do the same with 8F2. And also, I have a question on 8I2.
Okay. So is the board still in consensus of 8K2, the Midway Road in lieu of being remained, dedicated to that road sidewalk in the future? I think I heard that in the, in the budget hearing, so I just want to confirm. So that's a yes, yes, yes?
Yes.
So we can put that back into the consent agenda? Let's go with 8I2 first, and we'll get to 8F2.
I just have a question. This is on the gym, the fitness center. On this artwork, who, who did it? Was it the company that's putting in the artwork? I think this is a great idea. I'm not against everything. I'm just a little confused with the graphics of it because they have three fingers and like, what are they, are they reaching out for something? I like that it's motto is "We're Stronger Together." So I just need to know like where the design came from.
Sure. Matbaum, interim director of Parks and Recreation for the record. And so the outdoor fitness company has template designs for us to choose from. So this is a template that they offered us to look at, and we chose as an option to kind of bring the community together, you know, just a good unity picture. I wish I had a copy of it.
So it was, it was the company doing it? And this isn't painted, it's a wrap, correct?
It's a wrap. Yes, correct.
Because my other thing was if it was going to be painted, to reach out to the cultural arts, but if it's a wrap and it's a part of the package, okay. I just needed some clarification. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. On to 8F2. Howard, do you, do we have the Health Department here to have a conversation with this, or is there some background?
I do not believe we do, Mr. Chairman. I know Mr. Spurber is on vacation this week, but I can give you a little bit of background of what I know about it. Just as a reminder, kind of like the court system, the county is responsible for the facilities of the Health Department. So we pay for that, and we're helping them relocate in the near future, just down the street here on 23rd Street, as an example, kind of moving off of, over by 7th Street and moving just down the road. So we are responsible for their facilities. As was mentioned, they are under separate guidance in terms of the Surgeon General and the Health Department leadership in Tallahassee. And so their, their programs and what they do is, is not under our control, but we are responsible for their space. They did approach us for space. It's a, it's a, I think, a three-year grant that they have for contact tracing. I believe it is related more so to the pandemic and COVID-19 than it is to other diseases like hepatitis or any of the other things that they, they deal with. And they will not be, to my knowledge, they're not doing any lab work or anything like that in the office space. It is just office work, computers and phones and, and those types of things. And so that's, that's what I know of their proposal. I know that the rate that we are getting is a, I think it's at market or above market. So we are, we are satisfied in terms of the value of the space. One of the questions that was asked was, as we grow in staff going forward, do we have enough space? In talking to facilities, I believe we've got the space where we can handle the growth for up to three years, but I would not commit to anything longer than that. And so, and this is a space that is above our current Utilities Administration offices over at the other end of this complex.
All right. Thank you. And I suggest that no Communist Chinese or despots were involved in the process. That being said...
Mr. Chair, can I just ask one more question? Do we know how many? Because this was the first I'd heard, the 60 employees. I think probably we told me 28.
Yeah, we're, I don't know that 60 would fit in that space, to be honest with you. So I'm not quite sure. I know that they have a number of different activities related to the pandemic response that may be a total overall that they might have, but we are, we are not looking at 60 in that space. It would be much smaller than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other items on the consent agenda to be pulled for discussion or separate vote? As of now, each of these items have been discussed, and they're still available for a cumulative vote on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, before we do that...
Yes, ma'am.
Should we keep this one off the consent agenda and have conversation with Clint and then bring it back at the next meeting so that there's more clarification with him?
I don't think, at this point, we don't have much of a choice in that. Again, the state provides for the Health Department guidance. We are required, as we are with the court, court system, to provide space and office space, et cetera, for the court system, the sheriff, et cetera. And so all we are is a pass-through in providing that space. And I'm not interested in continuing that. If you want additional information, I suggest you talk to Clint. But at this point, I think that the process is, again, being guided by the state. So if there's additional information from the public that they would like to ask the state and the governor and the Health Department to chime in, I think that opportunity exists for them.
Well, I would agree that it exists with them, but if it's on consent and we approve it, and then something should come up from it, is it going to hurt anything to wait two weeks and put on the next agenda and let Clint come back and have conversation just for there to be some...
I think we've heard what the issue is, and it's being directed from the state down to us, and the request is made, and it's specific to space and a rental agreement. I'm not, I'm not interested in pushing it off any further. If you want a separate vote on this, you're welcome to ask for that, and I'll make it so.
Okay, do a separate vote.
Thank you. All right. We'll pull 8F2 for a separate vote. Any other items on the consent agenda that you'd like to have a separate vote? Hearing none, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
For approval? And a motion by Bart, second by Mitchell, any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Next item will be 8F2. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to wait and put it on the next agenda when Clint can come back.
So your motion would be to deny?
To deny it for today.
And that would be, if it were to come back, it would be August 17th would be the next meeting.
The 17th?
I thought, oh, we don't have a meeting? Oh.
Lack of a second. Lack of a second, motion dies. Is there a motion? I'll pass the gavel to the vice chair. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Motion made by Chairman Zdowski, second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So let the record reflect, it's a 3-2 vote. Bartz, Zdowski, Mitchell, for. Hutchinson, Townsend, against. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item. As soon as I can find it on my agenda. All right. Where am I? Regular agenda. Next item is coming from administration. This will be the impact fee program positions.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, agenda item 10A1 reflects the impact...
Howard, if you could. Guys, can you give us a minute? So we can hear? Okay. Thank you, Howard.
As you know, the board has been talking about several positions related to impact fee collections. One position is a impact fee manager position. This position will be somebody who will oversee all of the different impact fees that are assessed by the board and then provide the accounting, tracking the credits, making sure that the reports are done. It's a lot of activity, especially right now with all the development going on, and we're reminded that impact fees are assessed for new development. The second position is a position that would be housed in Planning and Development Services, and it is directly related to the collection of what we anticipate to be road impact fees and parks impact fees. As you know, the city of Port St. Lucie has terminated their impact fee collection agreement on those two areas for, with the county. And so we will be looking to take that on ourselves. We're developing the collection method currently. And so this position... And so this position would be charged with making sure that those collections are made and that the, that the process is fulfilled in terms of making, making sure that on parks and for roads that we are getting the information from the city correctly and that we will be following through and, and providing those, those resources where they're needed. So there's two different positions and we are, we are seeking your approval and so that we can, they're, they're, they're in the budget, but we are seeking your approval so that we can advertise and begin to get them filled. The impact fee agreement terminates on 10/1. And so while we were pulling this process together, it would be great to have these, these folks on board before, before that date starts.
Okay.
I should mention too, that these positions are paid forth by impact fees. So there's an administrative fee component within the impact fee ordinance that allows for these positions to be paid for by those fees.
And there is a requirement of the reporting and pointing out to and from the different cities. Any other questions on this item? Mr. Tipton?
We came to some kind of compromise through the chair. Would we still need both positions?
No, sir. If we were able to find a resolution, only the impact fee manager position would be still required.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Mitchell?
Second.
Second by Hutchinson. Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Next item. So we're coming through the county attorney.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners for the record, Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri. What you have before you is a FEMA appeal and a proposed resolution, and I'm gonna turn this over to the county administrator to give you some good news.
All right.
All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, there are times when you stand and fight the good fight and you lose, and then there are times when you do that and you win. And so I'm pleased to share with you today a significant win that has been 17 years in the making. And for the good news, I will turn it over to Ron Parrish, our Public Safety Director.
Thank you, Mr. Tipton, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Ron Parrish, Director of Public Safety. Before I get started, I did want to recognize and thank for their diligent efforts on this disaster recovery project for Hurricane Francis. Of course, as, as Howard has mentioned, and you're aware how long this process has been underway, and it has certainly taken a team to get through this. So first, I'd like to thank Erica Clever. Some of you may know Erica. As soon as we were notified of the de-obligation, we brought her on board and she was the orchestrator, I, for lack of a better term, of developing our, our appeals process. And so along with that, I'd like to recognize Catherine Barbieri and Dan McIntyre, as well as Michelle Salzburg and Ernie Abbott, who, from Baker Donelson, who were intricate in the development of our position. And of course, we had Billy Weinschank, Len Johnson, and Karen Kozak, who along internally helped us put all these things together. And, and, and that's just to name a few. There were a lot of people, a lot of moving parts over the last six years to put this appeal process together. So I did, did want to recognize and thank, thank all of them, so. But what you have today before you is a very comprehensive and often convoluted project worksheet, number 7274. And it's under grant disaster response recovery 1545, DR 1545. And it actually began just post of September of 2004, some 17 years ago with Hurricane Francis, where St. Lucie County was obligated a sum of $17,897,714.17 from the impacts of Hurricane Francis. Today, this grant is still active. And so after 17 years, it has not been closed out. And it's subject to the FEMA request for information and their inquiries and the things we've been going through over the last six years. In December of 2015, the Florida Division of Emergency Management closed several projects for Hurricane Francis, Gene, and Woma. During this process, FEMA and FDEM, Florida Division of Emergency Management, notified the county that they would be de-obligating some of the projects from Francis, making some of our projects from the 2004 Hurricane Francis ineligible for reimbursement or de-obligated. Of course, we did not agree with this determination and chose to file an appeal on FEMA's decision. And there were several PWs that were de-obligated and we had mostly favorable outcomes through the process. So it's been 17 years since both Francis and Gene came ashore here in St. Lucie County causing a tremendous amount of devastation. In total, Hurricane Francis, there was 201 project worksheets or PWs you may have referred, heard it referred to as. Again, equating to $17,897,000 or $714.17. Out of the 201 project worksheets, there were several appeals with varying reasons for FEMA's determination to that. Of course, by far, the most complex was the clerk of the court building between eligible, ineligible, caps, insurance, deductibles, limits. It just went on and on and on and on. So after numerous versions of these project worksheets and then a complete rewrite, the project worksheet 7274, we are now at version four, whereas FEMA has obligated $2.5 million thereabouts for this project, of which the federal share is at 90%, which is, it's normally at 75%, but this one is at 90%, which equates to $2.2 million or thereabouts. And with the state's share of 5% at $126,194.86, and with a waiver fee of $63,097.43, bringing the total amount for this obligation to $2,473,419.22. When the request for reimbursement is executed by the chair and advanced, a certification report will be submitted to FEMA from FDEM for closeout. No more inquiries, no more requests for information. Hurricane Francis will finally be closed out. With that being said, staff is recommending approval for the chair to execute the request for reimbursement and to continue with the process of closeout for Hurricane Francis disaster response 1545, project worksheet 7274, version four. If there's any question, I tried to answer them for you.
Any questions of Mr. Parrish?
Mr. Chair, I am.
Oops, hold on. Commissioner Townsend first and then Hutchinson.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Hutchinson.
Okay.
I was just gonna make a motion to approve.
I just wanted first to offer my thanks and I don't know what else you can say when you get clawed back like that. And that's one of the things we've often discussed about the clawbacks that come from the federal level, the fact of all the time and the work in the outside agencies that had to come into play that we've hired and stuff, that you all did a fantastic job because I never, to be honest, I never thought we'd see this at all come through. But I mean, it was the document, the facts are the facts and you can't really argue that part, part of it. So I'm glad it's come to light now.
And I'll suggest that this was a huge learning opportunity for us, which actually puts us in a good place right now for this American Recovery Act and some of the other things that are coming through and, and understanding how FEMA works, has worked and likely will work in the future. Storms are gonna continue to come. These processes are not gonna change and our staff is well versed now on the documentation side of, of all this. My, my concern was that they had been looking for about nine million when this whole thing started. So, so the change is extremely huge back this direction. But the other side of that is I think we probably have a wash with the amount of cost associated with staff time and outside councils and other opportunities. So, but it's still a lot better than paying back $9 million, so.
This was actually, was not expected. So this, this was not even considered. But after their review and the process between FDEM and FEMA, we were favorable here.
Well, congratulations to the whole team and thank you for your persistence.
Before we go though, I want a question more for Howard, I guess. You put in reserves or help with remade medical, do we use it for anything we choose? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, sir. Your, your question was, is, is this more of a general fund allocation of resources? And the answer is yes. And so what, what we will commit to is we will track this, these dollars separately. We'll put them aside in reserves for now, but they're certainly available for the board's consideration.
Thank you.
In future endeavors. I'd also like to just mention real quick, to your point, Mr. Chair, you know, I, I think the St. Lucie County staff has done really an excellent job in, in the documentation of these storm events. It, it's difficult when you, you are the staff and, and you're the same person, but every three months, you are now updating a new FEMA representative. And so we have told our story to these folks numerous times. And so in, in the telling of that story, we've actually gotten pretty good at all the documentation that we need. But all of this leading to the point, which I would like Mr. Parrish just to update you on, is that we have an update on the CARES Act funding and, and the ability to close that out.
So, thank you, Howard. Yes, and so you'll be having before you, either on the third or the 17th, our CARES Act closeout, which is incredible, right? We just started this some six, seven, eight months ago. And I have to tell you, we've been through the validation, we've been through the RFRs with them, and we have been very successful. And so to the point that, again, on July the 19th, I, I received correspondence from the Florida Division of Emergency Management, letting us know that, once I get it to you all for approval, that they will be closing out the CARES Act, which is, again, it's just incredible, the work that was put into that and done and successfully.
Excellent. Again, fine job by everybody. Any other questions on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. We already had one.
Well, we didn't have a second, so. So go ahead.
No, go ahead, Rudy. Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Hutchinson, second by Townsend. Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to capital improvement revenue note. Who wants this? Under county attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners again for the record, Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri. What you have before you is a capital improvement revenue note, series 2021, coastal storm risk management project Hutchinson Island Beach. As you're aware, since 2013, there's been persistent beach erosion that has continued to impact South Hutchinson Island. And the, and since that, we have entered a project partnership agreement on November 10th, 2020, with the, the St. Lucie County Rosin District approved a project partnership agreement for South Hutchinson Island Coastal Storm Risk Management Project. And pursuant to the project partnership agreement executed on December 2, 2020, the county is required to provide funds to cover a portion of the costs associated with a construction project, including the government engineering during construction and construction supervision and administrative costs. The total non-federal funds required for the contract award, construction administration, and construction contract are $9,273,000. The Army Corps has requested that these funds be deposited via wire transfer no later than August 4th, 2021, to avoid delays awarding the construction contract currently scheduled for award no later than September 30th, 2021. The balance needed for that $9,273,000 is approximately $4,500,000. Based on advice from the county's financial advisor, this money will be funded from a privately placed bank loan. At the county's direction, the county's financial advisor, PFM, distributed a request for proposals on June 10th, 2021 to a list of local, regional, and national financial institutions to identify the institution that could provide the county with a fixed rate loan at the lowest overall borrowing cost pursuant to certain conditions determined by the county. Prior to this middle deadline, the county received 11 proposals. Based on discussion with county staff and bond council, it was determined that a non-bank qualified interest rate with an eight-year term would provide the county with the most flexibility. Based on this, it was determined that Truist provided the best combination of interest rate and terms most favorable to the county. Truist offered a fixed, non-bank qualified interest rate of 1.4%. This interest rate would be held through a closing date no later than August 26th, thus eliminating the risk of rising interest rates. Truist also allows for prepayment in whole or part at any time without penalty. And this is an important feature because of any excess funding after the Army Corps of Engineers completes a project would be used to repay the 2021 note and reduce the debt service cost. Based on the attractive interest rate and acceptable terms and conditions provided in their proposal, the county's financial advisor, PFM, recommended selecting Truist as the loan provided for the 2021 note. And what you have before you today is a copy of a bond resolution prepared by the county's special assessment bond council. The resolution, if adopted, would authorize the issuance of a capital improvement revenue note in a principal amount not to exceed $4,560,000 to Truist, as recommended by the county's financial advisor, the final interest rate of 1.4%. Truist allows for prepayment in whole at any time without penalty and in part without, without penalty on any interest or principal date or subsequent dates as agreed to by the lender. Staff recommends the board approve resolution 2021-317 as prepared by the county's bond council, along with board approval to distribute previously approved grant funds received by the state of Florida for this project. And staff is here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Jennifer Matt, welcome back. First, I want to just say you guys did a great job during budget. We are so grateful for your work, so thank you very much. Jennifer, did you have anything else to share on this one?
No, on this, actually, I'm more up here for the next presentation related to the millage rates, but I was actively involved with the, with the process along with, with Josh in the county attorney's office and as well as our financial advisors. You know, initially, when we started this project several months ago, we talked to the board in an informal meeting and talked about how we were going to do a simultaneous bid process where we were bidding out the financing at the same time we were bidding out the, out the project. But within the last month or so, the Army Corps of Engineers determined that, that they would not issue the bids for the project until after the county cut them a check for, for the estimated project cost. And so we had to kind of regroup and that did, that did affect our decision-making some in, in what type of loan we looked for. Ultimately, we did end up going with an eight-year loan, which allowed us to keep the millage rates a little bit on the lower side, but as well as a loan that has no prepayment penalties so that if it comes in lower than the project, the estimated project cost, we can put that money back in and lower the, lower the payments in one of two ways. Either, either we could shorten the length of the, the loan by paying the tail end or we could spread out the payments so that every year, the, the amount that the property owners pay into the millage rate goes down. And so we'll have, at this point, we don't know what those final costs are going to be, but it, but going with this bank option, it is the one that gives us the most flexibility so that we can adjust going forward.
Okay, thank you. And Josh, you've, you have shepherded this thing through for several years now and I, I don't want to not give you the opportunity to have a last word to get to the next step, so.
Chairman, members of the board, I do appreciate all your support. We're at the, the tail end of this effort. As it stands now, with your approval, this loan will close on Monday and then funds will be directed to the Army Corps Tuesday or Wednesday before their August 4th deadline. They look to bid it out immediately, so on August 5th, it'll go out to bid. They're looking to get bids in by September 7th and then from there on, they'll issue NTP on September 30th. So we're on the home stretch. Likely construction start in December, November, December range. We're still working out those details and the, the permit requirements that are required to start on that time, timeline. But it's been a great, great push, a lot of good help. I want to thank the president's counsel for all their help, our, our Representative Mass office, Representative, Senator Rubio's office, for all the things that they've done to get us to this point. And of course, Chairwoman Frannie Hutchinson for all her support and helping me get through the process. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Hutchinson, did you wanna? You, you've been as part of this as anybody.
When I see the dredges out there and the dirt moving, then I get excited. Until then, too much can happen.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you, everyone.
I would say this was a Herculean effort, but I actually think it's better that we had Aquaman here.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion by Bart.
Second.
Second by Hutchinson. Any comments or questions on the item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item, Office of Management and Budget, and I introduced Matt and Jennifer a moment ago. Jennifer?
Yes, this item is, I'm sorry, for the record, Jennifer Hill, Management and Budget Director. This item is to set the millage rates that will go on the property tax notices, also referred to as TRIM notices, next month, as well as setting the public hearing dates in September for the budget, for the final adoption of the budget. And so, if I can get this thing turned on, a second here. Okay. So, the county administrators' recommended budget was distributed to the board on June 25. Since that time, the board has reviewed and discussed the budget extensively. Today, the board will adopt the millage rates for the property tax notices, after which the millage rates can be decreased throughout the budget process, but they cannot be increased. In September, the board will have two public hearings, one to adopt the tentative budget and one to adopt the final budget. Today, we'll cover some background information on the county's budget, and at the end of today's presentation, the board will consider the millage rates and the dates for the property, for the public hearings in September. If we look back 12 years, the county's budget is going from $591 million to a recommended $605 million, with the population that has gone from 278,000 to a forecasted 335,000, or an increase of 57,000 people. Over that time, the budget has increased 2%, while the population has grown by 20%. The county is operating with 132 less positions than in 2007. For next year, we will be operating with a workforce that was the size, that is the size that it was in 2004, while over that same 18-year period, our population has grown by 47% or 107,000 residents. With the reduced property values, there have been adjustments to the millage rates to provide needed services over the years. There were adjustments into 2016 and 2018, when the board found it appropriate to increase the millage rates to fund the sheriff's budget. For the current fiscal year, the budget decreased, the board decreased the millage rates by a tenth of a mil, and the recommended budget for next year has it going down another .25 or a quarter of a mil. In 2007, the average taxes collected for the county's general fund and fine and forfeiture fund was $611 per capita or per person. If you adjust that rate for inflation, today, we would be collecting $819 per person, which is reflected on the line on this graph. However, what we're actually collecting equates to $550 per person, which is reflected on the bars on this graph. We are charging 33% or $269 less than the fiscal year 2007 rate in today's dollars. For fiscal year '22, the property values have increased by 9.4% countywide, with the city of Port St. Lucie increasing by 13%, the city of Fort Pierce increasing by 8.6%, and the unincorporated area increasing by 4.9%. The way the property taxes are calculated is that the millage rate is multiplied by the assessed property value, and it's divided by 1,000. These taxes collected are influenced by two factors, the millage rate and the assessed value. Also, when we talk about the aggregate millage rate, it's also referred to as the average tax rate. It's obtained by taking the sum of all of the property taxes the county collects and dividing it by the taxable value of the county. And so when we look at the county's tax rates or millage rates, the first factor in the taxes levied is the millage rate. For the current fiscal year, the aggregate millage rate levied by all taxing districts in the county was 23.2597 mils. Of that, about 8.7684 mils were levied by this board, the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners, which includes funding for the constitutional officers, the dependent districts, and the municipal service taxing units. For the coming fiscal year, we are recommending a millage rate reduction. However, it'll take a collective effort by all taxing agencies to be able to make a significant impact on the overall tax bill. The second factor in the taxes levied is the property value. This year, the highest per capita property value in the state was Monroe County at $387,000. The lowest was Union County at $17,000. The statewide average was $98,647 per capita, and St. Lucie County's value was $73,026 per capita, which is 26% lower than the average. Sorry, keeps jumping. We analyze the taxes on the tax bill that the Board of County Commissioners in each county has control over. The lowest millage rate was Monroe County at 3.3429 mils. The highest was Dixie County at 13 mils. And for the 67 Florida counties, the average rate was 8.0333 mils. St. Lucie County's millage rate was 8.7684 mils. When you take the property values and the tax rates together, you get the amount of taxes actually paid. This graph shows the lowest per capita taxes at $170 for Union County, the highest at $1,404 for Martin County, the statewide average being $677, and St. Lucie County at $640. So, taking all this together, while St. Lucie County's millage rate is higher than the statewide average, St. Lucie County's taxable value is lower than the statewide average, and we take those two factors together, it results in the county's, St. Lucie County's taxes per capita being slightly below the statewide average. Prior to the pandemic, the board had completed its five-year plan to get us to a point where we were financially sustainable. This effort had us going into the pandemic on solid ground. When the pandemic hit, the county immediately put a purchasing freeze in place that lasted the remaining of the fiscal year. Additionally, some of the expenses that we would have normally made out of our general fund and fine and forfeiture fund were eligible to be paid for out of the CARES Act. Because of these two factors, the fiscal year 2020 expenses were far less than normal. And in fiscal year '21, the board has allocated most of that money that has come back from the CARES Act. And so that increases the fiscal year '21's expenses. And so when you look at this graph and you see a low number in fiscal year '20 and a much higher one in '21, it's related to the timing of those reimbursements from the federal dollars coming through. And so we didn't have the expenses in '20, but we expect to have them in '21. And then when we get beyond that into the coming years, we expect our revenues and expenses to be pretty stable. We've prepared a three-year forecast of our general fund and fine and forfeiture fund revenues and expenses. This model shows conservative revenue growth with a projected .015 mil reduction next year, which would bring our three-year decrease to .05 mils, as we had a tenth of a mil decrease last year, a recommended .25 mil decrease this year, and a projected one of .15 next year. This model includes 3% salary increases in this year and the next, a projected 9% increase in health insurance, and other expenses growing at 2%. This model doesn't address any service level changes or unexpected events such as hurricanes. As we develop the fiscal year '22 recommended budget, we face many challenges and opportunities. During our budget workshops, we focused on seven that we highlighted, first being stormwater. Heavy rains and localized flooding in the summer and fall of 2020 prompted the board to begin ramping up the county's stormwater and drainage program. The county has, also has additional requirements that exceed $100 million related to the basin management action plans. For South County Beach, as you just heard prior to this item, that project is rapidly evolving, and we're expecting to make a $9.3 million payment to the Army Corps next week for this project, which is being funded from a combination of state grants and loan proceeds, as well as, you know, as the contribution from the Army Corps. The affordable workforce housing, the past 15 months had seen housing and rent prices soar. The supply chain impacts to a number of goods and service for the pandemic, compounded by a high number of people looking to come to St. Lucie County with very little available housing inventory, has driven prices higher. So, St. Lucie County has long been affordable housing option for people working in Palm Beach, Martin, or Indian River Counties, but that landscape is rapidly changing. Another challenge we're facing is our ballot initiatives. Looking ahead, the existing ad valorem tax abatement program is set to expire at the end of next year. Additionally, the existing Parks MSTU that is currently levied countywide through interlocal agreements is set to expire in 2023. Both of these items could potentially be on the ballot next November. Road project acceleration, the Board of County Commissioners is looking to accelerate road widening projects on major roadways in order to better serve regional transportation of people, goods, and services. State and federal funding, while that is definitely an opportunity, it does also present some challenges. The CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan, along with grant opportunities, have created unique opportunities to address some critical one-time infrastructure needs. And lastly, inmate medical expenses, this is an area where we've focused a lot of attention on the last several years, as the significant cost impact the county's budget, and it's an issue that we continue to manage proactively. When we look at next year's budget, the additional property taxes that would have been generated just due to increase in property values in the general fund and fine and forfeiture fund would have been $14.7 million. However, with the proposed reduction in the millage rate and adjustments to other anticipated revenues for the next year, bring the total new revenue down to $10.2 million. The recommended budget includes several mandated increases and changes to several of the constitutional officers and judicial agencies budgets. It also includes anticipated increases for inmate medical costs. When you back out those expenses, it leaves us with $7 million available for allocation. Of that $7 million, 55% or $3.9 million has been allocated to the sheriff's office, leaving 45% or $3.1 million allocated to board operations, including the Florida retirement system increase, rate increases, which are mandated by the state, the cost of living allowance, health insurance increases, as well as funding for many county departments. The recommended millage rates include a .25 or 1/4 of a mil rate reduction in the fine and forfeiture fund. This reduction affects every tax property. Additionally, the proposed millages include a 0.1234 millage rate increase in the stormwater MSTU. This brings that millage rate back to the level it was pre the Great Recession, where it was substantially reduced. And at the time, it was intended to be a short-term reduction, but we had not gotten back to addressing the funding in that MSTU. That MSTU only impacts the unincorporated properties. Additionally, the millage rates reflect a .5324 millage rate increase for the South Hutchinson Island Beach Erosion Control MSTU, which only affects South Hutchinson Island properties. Overall, when you take these all together, it comes to an average or an aggregate of a 0.2057 aggregate millage rate reduction. If you look at how those changes affect a property with a median home value of $295,000 in St. Lucie County, a homesteaded property with that value located in one of the cities would see a $61.25 decrease from the county's changes alone. A property located in the unincorporated area other than South Hutchinson Island would see a $31.02 decrease, and a property located on South Hutchinson Island would see a $99.42 increase related to the South Hutchinson Island Beach project. One of the outstanding issues that we had at the conclusion of our budget workshops a couple of weeks ago was the funding for the Roundtable Gang Model. Last week, the county administrator met with the sheriff's office to discuss crime prevention funding, and collectively, we're recommending funding the Roundtable Gang Model at $150,000 for next year and $160,000 in the following year, using the crime prevention money that we get through court fines.
So, can you repeat that? And this is not coming from taxpayer ad valorem dollars? This is an actual fund that comes through, fees paid through the court system with tickets?
Right. The county gets money from court fines that we set aside in a separate account, and it can only be used for crime prevention, and the law related to it requires the county to work in collaboration with the sheriff's office on how that funding is used. And so the funding that we have for that, that is, it's not property tax dollars, it is court fines, and it is specifically being used for the purpose it is collected for.
Well, we're grateful to the sheriff and Chief Hester, who actually helped us work through that conversation, and Mr. Tipton, thank you for your efforts there as well.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I did want to just add that the amount that we receive in that fund every year is a little bit less than what we're recommending. And so I do want to point out that the goal here is to make sure that, working with the Roundtable, that we're able to increase their funding for this, not necessarily from county resources, but looking at community-wide resources. The benefits of what they do certainly are community-wide, and so we are hoping to work with them, asking the Roundtable to take the lead, but certainly working with them to see how they can increase that total funding up over 200,000, which is what's their request.
And I anticipate having conversations with each of the cities to help participate in this process. There are over 30 individuals who sit at that Roundtable, making efforts to protect our community in any number of ways. So I anticipate having those conversations as a member of the Roundtable, as your appointee.
All right. And so that brings me to the end of my presentation, the final thing, once the board, or as part of this agenda item, is that we'll be asking you to set the public hearing dates, which would be September 9 and September 23 at 6:00 PM here in this room at the county's chambers.
Okay. Any questions from the board or staff, or Mr. Tipton?
Mr. Chair, I just have a comment to make. First off, I just want to thank Mr. Tipton and Jennifer and Matt and all of the departments that really worked very hard, and we've had some very lively discussions through our budget discussions prior in July. But, you know, this board last year gave kind of like marching orders, for lack of a nicer way of saying it, you know, to bring that millage down. So I thank you for working within those confines that we placed on you, and then to even see that it's going to continue for the next projected at least two years, you know, which you showed is very promising to me. But, so, I just, as a reminder, this is the tentative, and you can't go higher, you just can't, but you do have the ability to go even lower throughout the next couple of weeks till the actual public hearing.
Any other comments on this, or questions of staff? I too want to thank all of the members of staff and every department for this effort. This board and even previous boards, because we did our five-year program and we stuck to our positions then, we stuck to our promises with the sales tax, as we indicated to the public, we have stuck to our indication of lowering the millage this year and also projecting additional reductions in the next two years based on what is happening in our community. So .25 is a significant reduction. To return over $6 million to the public has been something we have strived for, to get to equilibrium as to budgets, revenues, and expenses. And our staffs have done more with less. I think it's part of what we learned through the recession, and I think we've become much more nimble, much more effective, and much more cost-effective. So I'm very grateful for all of the efforts so far. So the request is, staff request is to set the millage currently, which will go out to the public in their trim notices, and we will have at least two, or two public hearings thereafter to have additional discussions or adjustments to the budget and/or millage at that time. So if there is nothing further, I'm pleased.
I just have a quick question.
Microphone.
We're going to set the millage first, and then we are going to approve the budget today?
You can do it as one motion. It's one agenda item with, including both recommendations. You can either do it by separate vote or combined, either way.
Just when you say approving the budget, you're just, you're approving the dates and the millage rate that goes forward today. That's the ask of staff.
And it can be increased, but it can be decreased.
Millage rate, yes, sir.
Yes, because do not, we're still going into budget discussions as we go through, what, the informal next week? That's all being brought back in again?
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood the question. When we get to the September hearings, you have two separate resolutions, one fully spelling out your millage rates, and then one fully spelling out the budget for each and every fund, and you have to adopt the millage rates first, and then you have to adopt your budget for this. This is not that formal approval of the budget. This is just simply giving us permission to move forward with the budget process so that we can put the rates out on the trim notices. You're not actually adopting a budget today, just the millage rates to go on the trim notices and the dates for our public hearings.
So if we had line-up and questions, it would be during the budget session that we would do that, correct?
You can ask then, and if you have questions in between, you can direct them to my office anytime, we'll try and get you answers.
Thank you.
So, and let me just clarify what I'm hearing from you two, Commissioner Mitchell, is that we will have further discussion regarding the budget at some point before those two meetings?
We don't have anything scheduled specifically to dive into going to, because I think between now and then, you only have one informal meeting, and it is pretty packed with other items. So we don't have, we don't have any other meetings scheduled to specifically talk about the budget between now and then. You can...
But you can continue to have...
You can talk about it at the two...
I'm sorry, I've got three people talking. I know, two ears.
If there was something in particular, what today's conversation about is kind of a culmination of the budget workshop conversations that we had. And so we would certainly hope that there's an implied endorsement of the budget that helped to get us to this millage rate that we're asking the board to help set today. If there are items that are in the budget, this is a good time to talk about it, or you can have those conversations in September. Either place is good, so.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. I appreciate that. Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Barts?
So I would ask you first, did you want to open the motion for the proposed millage? Or would you entertain conversation about some of the budget items? How would you like that?
I think we move forward with the millage. That's just a preliminary process by which we get the trim notice out through the property appraiser, and then any adjustments will be made thereafter. So if we can dispense with the approval of the millage as requested by staff, I think that would be a good start. Jennifer, do you agree?
I'm fine with that. The only, with this, the only thing we don't want to happen is we get all the way to the final hearing, and you have a concern that you haven't addressed with us. So you're welcome to bring any issues you have to our attention now or at the first hearing, but we don't want, I don't want to get to the very last one and be in that, and us try to scramble to address something that we weren't expecting.
Nor do I, which is why I was trying to navigate through the process.
And I would say, you know, it's fine to go ahead and bring concerns and issues to our attention now and direct us to work on it between now and September. It will be a lot smoother of a process if, at the end of today, you adopt the millage rates that have been presented to you, because otherwise, if you ask us to redo them right now, we're going to need to take a recess, we're going to need to make sure, because they have to be perfect. That being said, if you have a conversation today and you determine there's something you want changed that doesn't increase the millage rate, you can direct us to work on that between now and September, and in the meantime, go ahead and still adopt today's millage rates.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Chair? And I'm going to follow up on Commissioner Barts' comments and stuff. I agree, there are still some things I have questions on and was back and forth on. They won't change the millage on it, but I think there will be opportunity, even at the informal, to even discuss those at that one. I know you said it's a filled agenda, but from a budget standpoint, going on the budget, because I have a huge question, which I've already given them a heads up about, but it's not going to affect the millage.
Okay, well, I think we agreed that, and again, we have made it very possible to reduce the millage, and it's, again, a promise that we made, and I'd like to hold that promise with a reduction of .25 in the proposal. So if that's any additional conversations or discussions or concerns, otherwise I'll accept the motion to approve the millage as staff has recommended.
Second, does that also include the dates for the public hearings? Or does that need to be voted on separately?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the dates are in the recommendation, under staff recommendation.
Jennifer, would you confirm that? That would be just for the public's benefit. That would be September 9th at 6:00 PM, and then the final budget hearing would be September 23rd at 6:00 PM.
Or soon thereafter it could be done. So that is the recommendation from staff, board approval, set the millage to comply with truce and millage, advise property appraiser office for the millage rates as outlined in the worksheet analysis, rollback rate fiscal year 2021-22, under the column headed 2021-22 millage. Two, set two public hearings on September 9th, 2021, and September 23rd, 2021, at 6:00 PM in this building, in this chamber. So that is the recommended motion. So we have a motion by Barts and a second by Hutchinson for conversation. Any discussions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we do still have some work to do. There's some other items out there that we need to discuss. Some information has come through that we probably haven't gotten to that we'll get to. So thank you for all your work, Matt. Jennifer, you guys did a great job. I know it's been, it's always stressful in this gig. Every year we go through it, but it's nice to know that we have very professional staff and a board of county commissioners that cares about our taxpayers and doing the right thing by them. That said, thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next item.
I have one more question.
Yes, Commissioner Barts.
So, as you stated, the agenda is pretty full for the informal?
It is for August 10th. However, it is your agenda, and at the end of the day, we'll just pack a lunch, and we'll add the budget conversation to the agenda.
Well, since Commissioner Mitchell walked out for a second, let's make sure he buys lunch.
Isn't that the way it works? Okay, I absolutely would like to see some budget discussion and some questions that we have addressed at that meeting. So if we need lunch?
We're happy to facilitate that and listen, and if there's anything that you need in advance of that, of the informal, just let us know.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board? Okay, moving on to Planning and Development Services. Ms. Leslie Olson is coming to the podium or to the, wherever you're coming to.
The desk.
The desk, there you go.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair members of the commission. Leslie Olson, Planning and Development Services Director for the record. Where's the end show? Here we are.
Commissioner Mitchell, you're buying lunch at the informal. I thought it'd share.
And we don't want McDonald's.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, so since our meetings have been a little truncated over the past couple of months, I'm covering two months' worth of administrative approvals for you here this morning. This is for May and June. We have a truck school that is repurposing a site off of Orange Avenue. We've been working with them for a while, and the EDC is excited about this because they, the wages for truck drivers are very good, and there's a shortage. So it's an exciting thing for us to get this group out of Miami, moving up here.
Waste Pro thanks you.
As do all the citizens, I'm sure. And then we also have a minor adjustment to the major site plan out on the airport for aviation repairs and management. Hopefully get this one moving. It's been waiting to go for a bit here. We have a Class A mobile home and a minor adjustment to a conditional use permit. We have to amend these every time there's an ownership change, so it's a simple, a simple change for a north beach development. And that is it. Any questions?
Well, I would be remiss in not saying on behalf of Commissioner Mitchell that in that last item, to ensure that the conditions are followed. I know that's been something that the commissioner has had some concerns on, that if there's an issue going forward, that when conditions are placed on one development, that they are assured to be followed by the next development.
We have, even though we don't have a position in the upcoming budget, I think we can move some positions around as we have some changes in PDS, and we will be creating a position through a reclassification to, it will be a combination of a code enforcement officer and a planner to follow up on conditions of approval and development orders.
And I was going to bring this up too, with Mr. Tipton, as part of this discussion. Although we move forward with the two positions for the impact fee process, I didn't want to lose any steam in Planning and Development Services with positions that are necessary, that are paid for by the process and planning, and to lose any momentum that we have gained being able to move site plans through in an appropriate and a very efficient manner, which has given us a great deal of support from the public and the investment public on being able to bring businesses and getting business into business faster. So I just wanted to ensure that that was...
No, absolutely, and the budget that you have just considered in the previous item included positions for PDS, Planning and Development Services, to support just what you've indicated.
Anything else of Leslie? Anybody? No? That's it. We come to the end of our agenda. Mr. Tipton, do you have anything to share?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, just that our next informal meeting will be August 10th at 9:00 AM here in Conference Room 3, and then our next regular meeting will be August 17th here in these chambers, and that will be a morning meeting at 9:00 AM. There is still the possibility for that evening meeting on the 17th for that development out in the reserve, but I think we're still waiting for guidance on that, and so we'll still wait to hear.
Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I have one, and I hate to bring this up, but last night I was really dismayed with the action by the city of Port St. Lucie took in moving forward. I mean, we already knew they were moving forward with the conflict resolution regards to the road impact fees. Why, I don't know. They already ended the agreement and put us on notice. I'm not understanding their train of thought, why we're going to an impasse meeting. Secondly, I was quite taken aback, though, with the park, the park impact fees being thrown in there too. So I know this board had asked you and Mr. Tipton to go down and meet with them, and that looks like it's off the table because of their actions, and I'm sorry that they feel that there's not worth anything talking, being talked about to try to get there in light of the actions that they took last night. So thank you, Mr. Tipton, for trying, and we'll just hope for the best from here on out on this.
My concern, and I've raised it before, and it is the outside world, the investment world, it has come to find St. Lucie County, the hundreds of millions, if not billions, and hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of square feet of development and job creation is likely to be impacted, because we once had a cooperative working agreement where we actually did incentives for businesses to come here. It's my concern that the outside world will now look at us as though we are a family in despair or upset, and that, you know, the counting of the investors who would come here, that their local businesses can work together, their local governments can work together, is always a benefit. And I've shared my concerns with the EDC. I've offered my suggestions to some members of the councils, and not just Port St. Lucie, but also Fort Pierce, in that our working relationships have gained us a international record of being cooperative and working together. I don't know that that's going to exist going forward, not in the way it has been. There was a time in the 90s when it was just a battle, fighting and fighting and fighting, and that did nothing for anybody. The outside world looked at us, looked at the commissions then and the councils then as though nothing's going to get done because they're going to be fighting about everything. So that's my concern. I was hoping that we would have that chance to have that conversation with the council and their staff, but it's unfortunate that this is the result.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, I want to correct your comment. We did not start this. Port St. Lucie took this, Port St. Lucie took this decision and made that on their own. We have continuously been at the table, staffs have been trying to work together and so forth. So I think that's where my comments came from, was the dismay and the kind of taken aback that the willingness to not work with the county has come to this.
And I appreciate you clarifying that, because that is exactly the process. So any other comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to the chair.
We'll come to order St. Lucie County Erosion District. First on the agenda is general public comment. Is there anyone from the public? Seeing no one, is there an approval of the minutes of July 6?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to today's consent agenda. Are there any questions?
Move approval.
Once again, a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. There are no regular agendas. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you.